Item number one is going to open the meeting.
We need, we need funeral fans. We need those funeral fans.
Okay, item number three is going to be pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the recognized guest. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. This is speaking Union County. I'm passing that list around.
I think they've got the ceiling fan flipped, so it sucks. They're up and stood coming down because I can't feel it at all.
Okay, now, now, on number five, eight, ten, back. I've been advised today on number five to table it. Neither one of the DAs could be here, so this will be brought up later when one of them can be here.
Okay, Senator made a motion to table number five.
No action.
No action. I'm sorry, no action on number five. Senator made a motion for no action on number five. Start seven.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Part three.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number six. It's new business. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
The OSU and county clerk to prove the supplies have been ordered. Probably next week, very bright, that they will be starting on the route for next week. So maybe I'll have to block off some areas.
I just told them not to. I didn't want, unless they could be out Thursday, then they won't start their next route.
Right. So we have that. The city will be striking the courthouse lawn in the back and on the side tomorrow or Wednesday. I talked to Roger Edwards last week. We do have enough paint in the courthouse. I got with Ron, so we will not have to buy any paint for that this year. The D and D elevator is in the DA's office still, and hopefully by next week I'll have that on the agenda to see what they have decided on. And if anybody would like to, of the DA's office, last week, Ron went on and cut the door where the two locks are, and that way the main door is locked. Into there you will go in the hall, and they will have their door open. And then the door to the library is unlocked, but you can go in if they don't know. It'd be more privacy in the DA's office without people coming in and out. They said if that worked, they would not have need that glass in there. So anyway, they're going to try this. It looks very nice. They rearranged their offices last Friday, but inmates did come in and help rearrange them, and that was very much appreciated. So we do have that in line, and like I said, the one for the inmates and Aaron for some of the projects is usually during the lock in our area. So, thank you.
Just an update on what all we've been doing. We've been working those guys quite a bit. The lawn care and trash pickup has really covered up. I mean, just about every day of the week, as far as I go, where the ball fields are in full swing as far as, I think they put fertilizer out beginning of the season. Now it's really in full swing, so we're looking at having to mow the ball fields twice a week at this point. We're trying to take care of everything as best as what we can, and what we're going to do this week, I'm going to take the guys out since we got reunion days coming up. We're going to start at the City Limits sign on Highway nine out east, and we're going to work all the way in to the city, probably part about the casino, picking up trash on sides of highway, and then we're going to come back out and work on the, go, keep going west and come out to the other City Limits sign where we're going to really hammer it this week with those guys, and just keep maintaining what we're doing, trying to keep the area picked up and keep those guys working, so.
First of all, inmate count's forty-three. We did have a leak over the weekend, but Aaron and the inmates will work on getting that sealed back up today. Sheriff's always said we seized approximately half a pound of meth this last week, and you know, we're seeing more and more of it. But we did seize about a half a pound this week. Recovered a little bit more stolen property. Currently working on a stolen property case for $10,000 in cash. It was stolen out of a safe. Have pretty good idea on where that, where that went to and what's going on with that. Other than that, our call volume is still high. I brought that list in last week for, you know, the end of the month, middle, you know, just the three weeks of the month that we had. We did over a thousand calls for, you know, the month. So call volume is still high. We're going to ask for, and we talked about the jail board meeting this morning, we're going to ask that the last month of the sheriffs or that the jail salaries be paid. We have paid everything up until this point, plus we have some carryover on the maintenance and operation side of things. We do have enough money in maintenance and operation to switch over and make payroll, but we believe that the funding that we have, we've been able to continue to generate. If we do that, we're going to be asking county commissioners to buy groceries and keep the lights turned on out there. So financially at the jail, it's getting better. It's not overnight fix, but we are seeing improvement there. The only other question I have for the board is Friday for reunion days, will the courthouse be open or closed on Friday?
Well, the last two years we closed it. I think it's went pretty well that way, so I would be in favor of closing it on the fourth.
The only, the only reason I ask that question is because if we do close the courthouse, then I do have to give my folks an extra holiday because the courthouse is closed. So I mean, we do have to, I do have to do that on my, that's the reason why I ask. So we'll wait on you guys to get it.
And I do know in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, that Del or Ron has to be here one of those days. Is that correct, to open up the courthouse?
Ron stays here the whole day.
Yes.
Does it take off, we take the day, or the employees take the day of their personal time?
Do you all take a personal day? So if the employees are gone, take a personal day?
We have two personal days with the handbook, in situations like this.
So we can split up one day with Ron and then the other day with Del, unless they work something out. Is that correct? I mean, because, I mean, the quilt will be still be in the courthouse if they do it. He usually does. Usually he's here on Friday, I know.
So it's definite, we'll close it Friday?
I say if everybody wants to use a personal day.
I thought we should do it. I mean, I know we've done it both ways, and it's, I mean, like, it's works out better that way.
Yeah, we get less complaints.
All the parking, yeah, all the parking issues. I don't think anything can get done from elected officials when that's going on, so.
Commissioner, it's all the new business I have. I do have a meeting out at the office at eleven, but with this long agenda, would you mind to move to fifteen so I can discuss that DEQ contract?
If it's okay with everybody, we'll move to item number five. Is there any more new business? All right, we'll move down to item number fifteen, but okay with everybody, let's discuss, consider signing funding agreement with Department of Environmental.
Sheriff's office applied for a grant with DEQ out of Oklahoma, and the grant is, was for $47,140. What that is, is that will take care of two part-time employees, $27,000 of salary for two part-time employees. That will investigate illegal dump sites throughout the county. Where the dump site, that deputy will go out, they'll investigate it, see if they can find names, track different things like that, try to get the people to pick it up. If they don't pick it up, then we issue citations. We have DA's office on board with prosecuting of citations that are written for illegal dumping. It will also provide $10,000 in fuel for those two part-time deputies, plus for the mowing and different things that we do. It'll provide fuel for that. Also, we'll provide a new landscaping trailer to haul all our equipment on, to haul the trash that we pick up, and then it will pay for all protective equipment such as vests, clothing, gloves, trash bags, and we have $10,000 in maintenance and operation money. What it is, it's a reimbursement program. So what, what we will do is Mona will do monthly invoices for what we expend out. We'll send those to the state, and the state will reimburse those monthly expenditures. Supposed to start July, July to July. The way I've understood after talking to the gentleman that's overseeing the program is that next year there'll be, you know, a $10,000 to $15,000 cut because the initial money is a startup for the equipment that you need, and then after that, they'll cut the program, but we'll keep some fuel and salaries in place for those guys to continue to go out and investigate these illegal, these illegal dump sites. Currently, what I have is two guys that are part-time. Jeremy French and Terry Garland are part-time deputies. We're going to put them in those spots where they can do the investigation on those, plus if they're not doing investigations, they can still take calls. So it'll be a win-win for, win-win for all of us on that side of things. So I would just ask that the board of county commissioners and the chairman sign the funding agreement so I can get it sent back to them, and that's, that's actually the agreement. Once they get that back, they'll send us the actual contract, and then we'll be ready to go.
This is all the bodies I've seen. Sign. It says my name there. They got some of their bodies.
Yeah, that's all it is, is one signature.
I'll make motion, we sign the agreement.
I second it.
Part three.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
All right, can I have a good thing here?
I'll have to scan it and email it back to you, and if you want a copy of it here, I'll make you a copy of it.
Okay, we'll move, move back up there. Okay, all right, we'll move back to item number seven. Approved commission proceedings from previous meeting.
I'll make a motion on number seven.
Second.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Part three.
Yes. Item number eight will be approved blanket POs. We have $1,000 to rocket Nashville stones. We have $1,000 to fleet corps. I have $1,600 to performance fees. And $600 to fleet corps for out of jail. Then we put the blanket POs.
Make a motion on number eight.
Motion made by Sanders. I'll second it.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Paul story.
Yes. Item number nine will be discussed considering signing three twenty-four eight claim for Long Valley Page Two. It's just, this is just one parcel. I think there's, I may be wrong, I think there's like twenty, but nevertheless, this is the first one, and they're all being paid the O-D, so, and then it'll be coming through the county. I'm going to make that motion.
I'll second.
Paul story.
Yes.
Part three.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree. Yes.
Things for thirty-six hundred hours. Can't stick it all there, let's take it.
Thirty-six fifty.
Thirty-six fifty. Oh, yeah, that finally come in. Was a couple of years. Okay, item number ten will be discussed considering signing May monthly report for treasure and assesses report. Okay, moving on to item number eleven. We discuss consider ETR revolving funds program loan, ECR, twelve hundred, I mean, twelve-hundred and eighty-eight DA PB Road.
And what this is, is that we're, on PB Road, we are having a project that we're going to blacktop and fix a bridge. We have to buy seven point nine credits for beetles. This has to be purchased before they can start on the project by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It's going to be eighteen, $118,000 and $500. We do have the money, but we don't know how long we're going to be able, we have to put up $29,500 which we have, and we have the whole thing, but it could run us short by the time the Chalk Dolls reimburse us. And this would go through CED, and as soon as it is paid or we do not use it all, we, I will inform everybody that this is paid back. This is a project that's been going on for a while, and we're really close. We've already got the easements a hundred percent, and we're just waiting to pay the S.O.B. and move forward on the road.
You have to put up the whole hundred, eighteen, to get them.
Yes, yes, we do.
We just need a motion.
Make a motion on item number eleven.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Part three.
Yes.
Paul story.
Yes.
A credit costs $15,000.
For one credit.
For one credit, and it's seven point nine credits.
Here we go, there's something stopping from the phone. They just live a year, so it don't take long to get there.
We can check the birthday too, when.
But this is, this is, you know, it's just, this is something that is and has to be taken care of.
Okay, item number twelve, we discuss consider signing resolution for workers compensation removal for eighteen nineteen, cause we all know the case here, we make that decision. We're going to do option number, option number one. Yeah, option number one is what that's to be paid by July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, will be $104,802. Or you can go with option number two, which you make two payments. You make one for $52,401 by July thirty-first, and you will make the second payment by January thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen for $53,973, which will be, make a total payment of $106,374. But if you do the math, you'll save what, over a thousand dollars by making one payment. I mean, that'd.
Moving to option two last.
It's about, there'll be a little $1,400 to make math for that.
I think we asked Gail last year that she advised us that we should go with option three. You have to check it early then.
Well, it's roughly $1,400 when we draw interest on it. I mean, I don't know, it'd be cheaper to do option number one.
It'd be fifteen hundred and seventy-one bucks.
Fifteen hundred and seventy-one bucks. But it would be cheaper to do option number one, but we usually don't have the money.
See, I couldn't, you have money, you can't.
That, those are the options. If somebody will make a motion, a one or two or table, item, floor is open.
$1,500 is checking into, has been paid this week?
No, it has to be paid by July thirty-first. The first payment's going to be made July thirty-first, people.
Well, I'm making a motion, we tied with them next week, next few.
All right, I'll second that.
Part three, Paul story.
Yes.
Twenty-two, part twelve.
Twenty-twelve. Moving on to item number thirteen. Thirteen, discuss consider signing resolution for property and liability coverage.
Basically, it's basically kind of the same thing there.
The only difference is, the first payment would be $65,670, saying sixty-seven, three forty, save sixteen seventy. The total will be $131,341.
And those packets have that as well as the certificates and the copies of the verification form for your vehicle. And I went ahead and put a copy of your losses for the last five years in there, if anybody want to look those over. So there is, basically that's for your information. We've been the agent for the last twenty years or so, and we'd like to continue. We've, several years ago, when we went to ACO plan, we reduced our commission from the standard fifteen percent to four percent to help the county out. So still be here to, you know, advise and help you with things. We'd like to, we're continuing to add if we could. But you may want to table and, you know, talk to her as far as on that payment, you know, as well.
Well, I think if we pay with one of them, rather than pay with both of them, that'd be mine. So I'm going to make a motion, we table item number thirteen.
And I want to thank everybody for getting me those updated lists of equipment, vehicles and everything. It's helpful. It's not going to change the premium this year, but if we stay on top of it, and most of it's pretty good, we adjust to some value. That's how we stay on top and not going to suddenly flip up on us, so. But any questions for me, it'll all be there in your package if you need anything. We appreciate you guys. Thank y'all.
Bill, when we send our, when we send our inventory into ACO, do they not send it to you?
No, so send it through us, and that way you got a double check.
Okay, okay.
If you don't mind, and then we'll make sure to get it to them.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, item number four. I will, we can't broke out Thursday, I'm sorry.
Did you make motion?
Yes, I do.
Both of them, Sanders, I don't know.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Part three.
Yes. Okay, item number fourteen will be discussed considering signing community work attention service. Have you lived defense law?
I have not. Is that still something like that on the page?
Was him before nineteen eighty-eight, he could lock a child up in prison with the notes?
There was fifteen sixteen-year-old school in prison.
Thought, yeah, I just thought I was reading here before nineteen eighty-eight. I didn't know you.
It's not what it is, contract, the thousand, you know.
It'll be good, thirteen thirty-two thousand and eighteen.
Just second it.
Part three.
You, Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Paul story.
Yes.
Karen, it's fourteen and nineteen, is that right?
I'll have to scan it.
Okay, moving on to item number eleven, we discuss consider ETR revolving funds program lung, ECR twelve hundred, I mean twelve-hundred, AKA PB Road project. CO ninety-nine oh seven dash seventeen oh nine to be paid by, excuse me, Choctaw Nation.
This is an easement that was taken care of on that road that was brought up on PB Road, on an easement in Duquesne.
Who's PB Road?
It's Topps Way in town, it's something about grassy, grassy light.
All right.
I'll make a motion on sixteen. I give up, I'm writing. Yes. Seventeen is to pay debt.
Okay, discuss consider approval slash disapproval, offer letter to Justin and Barbara Stevens for ECR, AKA PB Road project. CO ninety-nine oh seven dash seventeen oh nine to be paid by, excuse me, Choctaw Nation.
This is an easement that was taken care of on that road that was brought up on PB Road, on an easement in Duquesne.
Who's PB Road?
It's Topps Way in town, it's something about grassy, grassy light.
All right.
I'll make a motion on sixteen. I give up, I'm writing. Yes. Seventeen is to pay debt.
Okay, discuss consider approval invoice for housing right away acquisition, East County Road twelve, twenty PB Road, and probably paid for by Choctaw Nation, and six parcels, fifteen, that'd be nine thousand dollars.
This will complete his. I'll make a motion on number seventeen.
Sanders, second.
Yes.
Eighteen will be discussed considering, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, contract note for office of juvenile affairs.
This is basically what we decided on another one. I'll make a motion on number eighteen.
I'll second.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the next one, we discuss consider signing, I thought you said, number nineteen, discuss consider signing community work attention center for year eighteen nineteen.
Make a motion on number twenty.
I'll second.
Yes.
Number nineteen, discuss consider signing community work attention center for year eighteen nineteen.
Make a motion on number twenty.
I'll second.
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty-one will be discussed and take possible action, signing title six to trust, but we're gonna table that, if there's no action, can we just, can we just put it back on the agenda?
Yes.
There's gonna be no action taken on twenty-one, it will be back on the agenda when we get to work. So, item number twenty-seven. I'm gonna do it.